Hold over in the Irons, it's the council meeting of August 20th, 2023. Uh, for any case tonight, we do not have anybody so to be stated in one of the Lord's Prayer. And we will have special allegiance immediately by our Father.
Good morning, heaven. How will we be dining? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us today our daily bread, forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We do not intend to teach you to deliver us from evil, for thine is the kingdom, power, and glory forever. Amen.
Thank you.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good. Roll call please, Marta.
Cleary.
Here.
Haney.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawke.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda, we have the approval minutes from the regular council meeting of August 10th, 2023, and the finance committee meeting of April, August 10th, 2023. Do I have any edits, additions, or omissions to those minutes? Saying none, those minutes would stay as approved. Next on the agenda, we have audience participation. Tonight, we have Kevin Wood, uh, as an invited guest. Uh, Mr. Wood, if you would please step to the podium. And please remind everybody of the new name of the firm.
I'm Kevin Wood with, um, we are officially Arcadis now. We're still kind of saying Arcadis IBI, but nothing has changed, same people, just different name. Um, so Nate had requested that I come and give some updates. It's been a little while since I've been here, so, um, I'm passing around an agenda, and I will just kind of run through that and then answer any questions that anyone has. Um, top of the list, the ongoing Fifth Street Bridge replacement, and our transportation folks tell us that they're still waiting on the, um, uh, right-of-way to be finished on that, so nothing has really changed. Um, the South Third Street water line and street reconstruction project. We got yet another list of questions last, just last week, from the federal EDA, which we promptly responded to. Um, we're hoping that's the last, uh, round of questions before they give us the go-ahead to actually advertise that project for bid. Uh, the 93 roundabouts are on schedule. Um, the contractors, technically, his construction completion date is June 30th of 2024, but his contract states that all lanes and, uh, on and, uh, off ramps have to be open by October 15th of this year. Um, we are continuing, uh, if you recall, several months ago, we had three contracts for, uh, three different parts of, uh, work related to your sewer system, the sewer modeling, the three-and-a-half alley analysis, and the pump station, uh, seven work, and all of those are ongoing. Um, there's no, really nothing in particular to report at this time. Um, yesterday was a big day. We had the bid opening on the Batham Lane and Orchard, uh, sewer projects, and we got three bids within the range, uh, the allowable range of those projects. Uh, Contract One, which was for all of the street reconstruction, Storm Sewers, uh, the low bidder, was Allard Construction. Contract Two, which is this large stormwater pump station, was Allard Construction. And then Contract Three, which is the Orchard Sanitary Lift Station and Force Main Project, uh, the low bidder was Southern Ohio Excavating. Um, we are just now starting to pour through all of the information to, uh, make sure everything checks out, check references, um, all of that sort of thing, and then, uh, we will be, uh, submitting a recommendation letter, uh, to the city after we've gone through all of that with, um, our recommendation as to who the best and lowest, uh, bidders, uh, are. And if the city agrees to that, then we will begin the contract process and, uh, get them lined up and get schedules in place and all of that good stuff. Um, next is Phase Two paving contract. Epleen won that. That's the same contractor who did the Phase One paving. Um, I don't have an exact bid date. They tell me in the coming, or construction start date. They tell me that in the coming weeks, uh, they should be able to begin work on that. So, as we learn more, um, I'll relay that to the city. Um, the Kiowa, uh, street paving project, we have submitted initial plans to ODOT. Um, they notified us last week that the, their environmental review is going to take a little bit longer than they had anticipated because they have to send it to Central Office. We were really hoping to get that completed on, and bid and construction done this year, but the clock is really ticking, so, and if we have not, uh, gotten a final environmental and plan review from them by mid-September, it's going to be very difficult to have enough time to get that project out to bid and construct it before the asphalt plants close. So, we're kind of at the mercy of ODOT on that right now, but we're working closely with them. Um, the soil borings that were started, uh, last year at the wastewater plant before the focus was redirected to Batham Lane is still ongoing. We'll be, uh, getting, uh, the geotechnical consultant out there to finish that work in the coming months. Uh, I left item nine on there. That's a, uh, CDVG grant application that we did several months ago. We're still waiting to hear on that. And, um, then the Appalachian Community Grant Program, that's the, uh, program that you've all heard about, that we and several consultants are working in Ironton and Lawrence County on. Um, toward that date of the last, or toward the last quarter of this year, at which time all of the large grant requests will go into the state. Um, and then we'll hear sometime next year who, who the winners are in, in that program. So that is my quick breeze through updates. Uh, does anyone have questions?
Yeah, what is the, uh, number 10? I know a career of Fred Sports Park, and it's Vernon.
Um, so, yeah, the, the three main projects in Ironton that, uh, we've been tasked with looking at are riverfront improvements, the recreational, uh, park, and then, um, connecting, uh, the city would like to connect the riverfront in downtown to the gateway and then on to that sports complex. Um, and so, we are looking at Vernon Street as kind of a, um, multi-use, shared, shared-use street, where, you know, the four-wheel vehicles and pedestrians and bikes and, and cars could all use that as a main connector through town.
One other question. Number one, the North Fifth Street Bridge replacement. Why is it pending a right-of-way when the bridge was already there before? What's the right-of-way?
Uh, yeah, it's a right-of-way for construction.
It what?
Uh, for construction. So it's a temporary right-of-way that they need to obtain in order to get the construction equipment in on both sides of the river to do the work, and it's been a long, ongoing task that, and we were not allowed to do that work. ODOT required that another consultant be brought in to, to work on that acquisition, and so they've been working with them on that.
Alright, thank you.
Nate?
I have a few questions.
I figured you might.
Sorry. You know me too well, alright. Fifth Street Bridge replacement, we're locked in for that amount. It's not going to inflate anymore.
Well, it, it, it is all dependent on the cost, the final cost of the, um, the right-of-way acquisition. And when they actually bid the project like any of these, you know, we know what our estimate is for construction, but we never know for sure until it's bid and you have a contract, and then you never know for sure until it's done because it's...
So it sounds like, no, we're not locked in.
That's, that's not a guarantee.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, number three, the roundabouts. I know the last addition we wanted was a late add-on was the water line. Were we able to get that in?
Yeah, we submitted that several weeks ago, and in fact, Brett and I were talking about that yesterday. Um, we have not, we had to submit that, uh, permit request electronically. Brett initially talked with the guy at ODOT who said he would help usher that through. We've not yet heard anything, so I asked Brett yesterday if he would ping the guy at ODOT because I figured it'd be more impactful coming from the city than us, and he said he was doing that.
Alright. On, number four, pump station number seven, the design process on that. Um, are you anticipating a, uh, refurbishment that next year in '24?
I, I would anticipate...
Because typically we have our flood improvement fund that we do, try to do one, one a year.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, is that the next one?
That was our understanding, and I think...
Are they set to go for, you think, the construction or refurbishment?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we will have our part done pretty quickly next year, yeah.
Okay. Uh, do you have any cost estimates on that?
Not yet.
Okay. And then, number six, uh, on the phase two, how many blocks approximately is that for the paving?
There's quite a few.
We do about feet.
Yeah, it's, um...
300 foot per block, you can't really beat.
Yeah, well, it's several, it's, the blocks are kind of spread all over.
I asked, it was, it's about one and a half of the last payment.
So 150% more than...
Yeah.
There is a math that we have, but I can forward the mayor to...
Well, I mean, I can't.
Okay. It's, alright. Okay. We can't get the math for him.
That's it. Thanks for your time, Kevin. I appreciate it. Sir?
Chris?
Um, this might be redundant, Kevin. I just want to make sure that I'm clear. Um, when we met one of those times, uh, in the mayor's office, we talked about, uh, some of the replacement parts, uh, how we were going to account for things that would quickly become obsolete versus replacing the frame now. So is that figured into this, uh, this item number four? Um, we talked about trying to maintain the pump stations that were, uh, replacing the parts that we needed to, so my question is this.
On the pump station seven?
Uh, well, pump station number seven in particular, I guess, is listed.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, once we complete our study and plans for that, we'll develop a cost estimate for construction of what we anticipated the cost to bid and construct it. And then we will also develop, um, our estimate of ongoing operation and maintenance costs. And when we calculate that out, it's, you know, the annual electricity and things like that, but then also how much money you should put aside each year so that when the time comes, you have sufficient money to replace pumps or whatever equipment it might be. Thank you.
Kevin, on number five, we prepared several easements in this one property acquisition. I only have one of those signed in my file, so I don't know where we're at.
Yeah.
Encourage those people to get in the office and sign those.
Yeah, the mayor and I have talked about that, and, um...
You can encourage them in your offices.
One has come.
I mean, I, I spoke with two of them, and one of them I know signed, and, and, uh...
Yes. I have that in my file, and I've gotten a check and a recording. I was just kind of waiting on the others, but...
Yeah, and I'm happy to call and speak with the others to see if they have questions or go meet with them. I don't have, but I don't have a way to contact them if, if anyone has a number or...
I think maybe Mark may, but whoever dealt with them initially...
Oh, is it the Fifth Street Bridge?
No, Fifth Street Bridge is another lawsuit. We're wait, Mark's dealing with that too. We've got that, that, we're waiting on publication of Fifth Street Bridge. But, um, Batham, if, they just said the easements just have to be signed, and the acquisition deed needs to be signed.
Yeah.
Those are ready.
Yeah, I've not, I've never had contact with any of them. You know, we provided the documents to the city of where the easements are needed, and then I, I assume that when you mailed them to them, that was probably, unless someone at the city spoke to them, that's probably the first they heard of it. And so, again, I'm happy, I've not talked to any of them, but I'm happy to. I just need to know, I, I can go knock on their door, but it's probably better to start with a call than...
Then what, you know, the acquisition, the payment, all that, I don't know what the terms of that even are. I just, we prepared the documents and then...
Right. And you can, and you're right, because we need, now that we have three good bids, and we're going to be getting hopefully contracts entered here in the next month or so.
The term of counsel just volunteered to, uh, take that off. So I'll show up some of that again.
Okay, yeah, we...
And I hope that speaks to...
I'll, I'll get with you.
Okay, yeah, yeah, because we do need to get those moving because we don't want to hold up the contract.
Right.
Good on you. Any else? Uh, Mr. Wood, just, just, uh, for clarity, uh, Phase One and Phase Two both came in under budget, correct? So we're, you know, able to pave, you know, get more blocks paved, correct? So, started out with our budget, came in under budget. You know, you worked with mayor to further the paving projects, correct?
Yeah, on the first phase, you were able to kind of add in some things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good deal. Thank you for working on that. Any else? Thank you, Mr. Wood. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Any other audience participation? If you do, uh, please step to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to address counsel.
I would like to know the process of what you feel like to do these, do these, 1026 South 11th Street, Irons in Ohio. My house seemed to have burnt for no reason.
What, I couldn't hear you very first.
My address is 3026 South 11th, and I'd like to know your process as far as collecting this property that you want to build these things on, because I have a commercial zone lot. In 2003, it was worth $33,000. I stepped over to the courthouse after it burnt for, it just burnt, for no reason. You know, I mean, nobody home, no lightning, no electric, no nothing. My house just burns. And there, but, see, we like, and there's four personal holders against my electric bill that says I can't have electric, and it's a commercial zoned area. And, but, uh, yeah, and I was kind of, the process to that, collecting that kind of property.
I'm going to refer you to our solicitor, because I'm not really understanding what's going on there.
What, what property are you talking about?
My house. 3026 South 11th Street. And right in front of Jolens.
Okay. And who, what is your question?
What's your process as far as collecting this property, because my house burnt for no reason? There was nobody home. Well, you got to get the property to build things on, right?
I, I'm not real sure about what your question or concern is. Your, your, your house is not burned down.
My house is 3026 South 11th. What's the project to be built there?
I, I don't know that anybody's collected your property or...
It's a commercial zoned area. They've, nobody's collected it because I won't leave it.
Are you asking me to sell it?
Uh, no, I would sell it, but they're telling me that the property value has went down from 2003 till now. From $33,000 to $26,000, and property value has tripled since then.
My guess would be that if the home burnt down, the property value's going to go down.
Yeah, I can understand that, but if it was, if, if property value has tripled, how did it get back to $26,000 less than what I paid for it in 2003?
I'd say it's just because that's what the lot's worth at this point, with no home on it.
Counsel doesn't value the property.
I, I did, I was asking, I guess, uh, maybe I just don't know who the property ask about this.
County auditor.
Well, no one seems to want to talk to me outside me coming to this meeting.
So exactly what is going on with, with, so your home burnt down, you're no longer living there, right?
I live in the garage. I haven't had electric since the, the coronavirus come out. There was four personal holders put against my electric bill that said I was not allowed to have electric, so the electric company would not turn it on, but the house was completely able to have electric. I had a meeting with the mayor here to try to find out, him and Mr. Ross.
You still have the house there?
Yes, and then my house got burnt after that. Nobody was home 24 hours prior to this fire, and I watched it go up in flames, and I was walking down by Spriggs Distributor, but my house burnt. And there's no electric and no lightning storm. I was just curious, but no one wants to produce a, uh, a reason as to why it burned.
Well, what did the, did they do, uh, did the fire department, you know, provide you with a detailed description of their investigation?
No. They just tried to buy my house for $7,000, people do. Not, and not a particular person, but they're trying to just buy my house for $7,000. And, um, it's, it's, it's a city thing. I, I just, I just figured I, I might, I might ask. I might get an answer. I might not. See, I can't get no...
Property, like, your property taxes go to the county, right? So whatever, the city has no say-so whatsoever on the valuation of your property.
Right. Where's the grant money that, like, comes, that, that you get? Where's that go through? Where's that processed through?
There's a multitude of grants that, that we get.
See, I was getting a grant from the president for self-employment that paid me $585 a week. It was called a PUA account, and it got transferred to a total here in Irons.
To a what?
To a total in Irons, and that's up to $48,000. And I can't find no one to talk to me about that either. I've been to the police, I've been to the prosecutor's office, I've been to the mayor, and now I'm at a city council meeting, and I can't seem to find an answer nowhere.
Um, yeah.
My guns get stuck.
I, I really don't. I don't have an answer truthfully for you. Did mayor and solicitor, I mean, did you guys, have you spoken with them?
I, I'm not sure, but I don't have an answer to this question.
Mayor, what did, what was the discussion?
Because, like, I'm ready to...
To, to pretty much all of them. I mean, even, even, even I get pulled over and my guns get taken by the officers, and because their superior officers say I don't possess the right to own one, so they take my guns and, uh, tell me I'm not allowed to own one in Irons.
We're not the judicial branch of government.
I, I understand that, but when you, when you have questions and nobody else will answer your questions, the only place you have to go is to people who run the city, right? That'd be the city council, correct?
Well, we appropriate and legislate.
Okay, well, I, I had to ask, right?
Yeah. And I appreciate you coming. I just, it seems like there's a few levels to what's going on with you, and I, I can, I can work on, you know, to try to find you an answer, but I do not have an answer for you right now.
It seems like someone's trying to run me off my property and still it, just taking.
Well, the, the one thing I would advise you to do, and this is just me personally, what I would advise you to do is go to, uh, the, the auditor's office and, you know, I guess, ask for, for records on your home, and I would probably would contact the fire department and ask for the report.
And Mr. Nip, though, he will not talk to me. He's my first cousin, and, and we grew up together, so he knows I'm pretty upset about this.
Yeah.
And he just won't talk to you.
I also may, you know, you may want to, uh, hire a, an attorney.
Well, you, I don't have no money.
Yeah.
See, they took all that. So I've had no income at all, or no food stamps, no public assistance or nothing for four years. And I can't get no help.
Yeah.
And I can't get no answers.
I, my, my first, though, like I said, I, I will try to find you some answers on that, but the first two things that I would advise you to do, and this, this is just me personally, I would go to the auditor's office. You're saying, uh, Mr. Nip won't talk to you. He's got, you know, assistants and, and work, you know, employees in there. I would also contact the fire department to try to, uh, get the report from your incident at your home. Those are the two, two things I'd start with.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Any other eyes participation? I'm seeing none. Moving on to communications, there are none. Reports, there are none. Uh, moving along to ordinances, Marta, would you please give ordinance number 2354, first reading?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Irons, the state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
I'd like to, uh, recommend that we suspend the rules and give ordinance 2354, second, third reading, by title only. Possible adoption, and the finance committee did have a favorable recommendation on it.
Jacob?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance number 2354. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Marta, would you please give ordinance 2354, second and third reading by title only?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Irons, the state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring an emergency, second reading. Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Irons, the state of Ohio for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023, and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to, uh, to pass ordinance...
Adopt.
Adopt ordinance 2354.
Mike?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike to adopt ordinance 2354. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance 2351. Would you please give that as third reading by title only?
Repealing codified ordinance 860.12 of the ordinances of the city of Irons, Ohio, and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2351.
Jacob?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to adopt ordinance 2351. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawke.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance 2351 has been adopted. Moving along to ordinance number 2352. Would you please give that second reading?
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a professional engineering consulting services contract for the Batham Lane Street and Storm Sewer and Orchard Lift Station and Force Main improvement project with Arcadis Engineering Services, USA Inc., and declaring an emergency, second reading.
Bob?
Make a motion we suspend the rules and give ordinance 2352, uh, first reading by title only, and it was favorably recommended by the committee.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike. This is, sorry, discussion.
Chris, can you remind me, what's the Fifth Street that, uh, is, is Elizabeth? Is that the street that gives, um, off the map of Florence? Florence, thank you. Um, some folks that were living there were asking, um, mayor or engineers, um, would the, would the line is to, to be applied as it's approaching that cul-de-sac? Um, there's a, um, some...
for the Batham Lane Street and Storm Sewer and Orchard Lift Station and Horse Main Improvement Project with Arcades Engineering Services, USA Inc., and declaring an emergency second reading.
Bob?
Make a motion, we suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-three fifty-two third reading by title only, and it was favorably recommended by the finance committee.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Bob and a second by Mike. This is, sorry, discussion.
Chris, can you remind me, what's the street that, is it listed? That the street that goes off map of...
Florence.
Florence, thank you. Some folks that were living there were asking mayor or engineers, would the, would the line is to, to be applied as it's approaching that cul-de-sac? There's a, some sort of apparatus that going down towards it sits just to the right of that, that cul-de-sac. Apparently, the plans for this were asking to deviate a little bit from that, that drain back down the hill and closely between two properties. Has there been any discussion or any, any dialogue on how that's gonna be addressed? Florence is in the town hall. It's the town hall. But it, but it also, but it also impacts the folks. You're facing, yeah, just down the hill between the house with the pool and house without. I guess I, I don't understand completely the question, but yeah, there is an easement there. The easement's a part there. There, there, and there's a, there's currently a, a drain that's there that the question the neighbors have, not just the cabinet, but the neighbors on that entire street have. Instead of going directly to that drain, the plans, I guess, imply that it's going to deviate just to the northwest of that drain. It's gonna deviate just to the northwest of that drain down.
I don't know, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but the whole reason we originally built the Batham Lane, by first degree was because those are sewers that have catch basin lids on them, so it's made it fine. So we have to take this online and actually make the panel sewer for a sewer. So that's what we're trying to do, diaper all of this water away from the catch basin now because the catch basin, they're on the catch basin, so they, they were originally, I think, during, like, twenty-fourteen or something, they, you know, those back end of the water, they get the model back. I think, I don't know.
I think twenty-fourteen sounds right, though. Your honor, also, would, so would the explanation for that be available for Lloyd Kavanagh to...
Yeah, I'm happy to talk to him. If that, that line is along the rest of Orchard Lift Station, it's overdue, it's taken on storm water and running it away from the sewer lift station, and it's a huge problem.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Mike? I don't wanna get us much off track, but mayor and Kevin, would there be some sort of simplified schematics that the folks in Green Valley, Batham Lane could, to get those to them so they could understand what's going on? They're just getting word that big things are happening down there and they don't know where a lot is going to happen.
Yeah, we've actually started putting together some information with the buyers to give people, so that they kind of at least have some ideas of what's coming.
They, they get, oh, I mean, we have some, at least where the lines and where the proposed work is.
I had a conversation with Mrs. Staley come down there Tuesday at length. And I told her I mentioned it tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else, any other discussion? Jacob?
I'll second.
Wait, we got a second by Bob and a, or a motion by Bob, second by Mike to suspend the rules. You wanted to...
I'll make a motion.
Second, second, okay. Roll call, please, Marta.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Haw.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three fifty-two's been adopted. Moving on to resolutions, Marta, would you please give resolution number twenty-three fifty-three reading?
Authorizing the mayor to enter into addendum number one, joint development agreement to develop a Southern Ohio Regional Sports Complex, Travel Recreation Complex in Lawrence County, City of Irons, and declaring an emergency.
Jacob?
I'd like to make mention that resolution twenty-three fifty-three received favorable recommendation by finance, and I'd like to make a motion that we adopt, or pass, resolution twenty-three fifty-three.
Bob?
I'll second the motion to pass resolution twenty-three fifty-three.
We have a motion by Jacob and a second by Bob to pass resolution twenty-three fifty-three. Roll call, please. Our discussion, sorry.
Just real quick, offline, I verified with Nate, the question, of course, always having the fact that I had was, at some point during our discussion before the meeting, was the possibility that some portion of this didn't pan out as it was initially designed, that there would be alternative locations. My big question, Nate confirmed for me that the, the plan is for this project to reside in Irons, not just where it belongs.
Right, yes, yep. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Haw.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Resolution twen, uh, number twenty-three fifty-three is passed. Moving on to miscellaneous. I do, I've got one real quick, and, well, I'm here, I'm here right now. Does anybody know when the next dump day is? John?
That's right.
Next.
Piggybacking on that, Chris.
Craig?
Had somebody ask me, it may have been prior to, it may have been prior to you all, but, but we had in the past committed to also have a quarterly citywide rummage sales because we had people that were buying rummage sale permits every week, and we decided to just do quarterly citywide rummage sales. And someone was asking me, like, when's our next rummage sale? We've, we've been waiting to see it, and I can't think of a time that, that we've done it recently, so just, I wanted to get that, just look back off the radar that we did commit to that.
First of the month, next month, sound like a plan? First weekend of the month?
Doesn't matter to me, in one, in one week. I just want us to have...
First week, I, is, is Friday, Saturday, Sunday? I mean, I don't think rummage sales are typically...
Yeah. That's why I was asking. And is that permit free?
Yes.
We determined, okay.
Yes. We, so we, we determined that that was, at the time, the fee was like five dollars, and there were some issues around if you, if you paid the permit, it, it, it seemed to be lingering on and on and on. So we put some guardrails around how long that is. If you wanna have a yard sale in between the city provided ones, you could do so, but it had those guardrails around it. The fee went up, but we, in addition to that, we were gonna provide as a city free weekends where you could do it without a permit.
Can I make a recommendation, Chris, maybe make third weekend, eighth month? Give us a month.
I've always been told the first month, rummage sales are the best. I don't frequent rummage sales, but that's just what I've heard. I, I mean, if, October, if I have one in October, then I...
I don't care. We're committed to it quarterly. And, I mean, I think you guys, we committed to it quarterly, right? So, I mean, I think it'd be great to go in conjunction with whatever weekend we do, whatever week we commit to doing our cleanup, that we do the yard sale, the week, the weekend before.
Mayor, I, cause I asked about the dump day. I didn't realize you left.
Yeah, it's something that we've been working on, so I plan to have that tomorrow.
Because you know it.
Plan on having a date tomorrow?
Yeah. I mean, we're still in the same quarter as the last one.
Okay. Do you, well, do you wanna go with Craig's idea and have them the same date? Maybe October first, first weekend of October? And have the rummage sale and the dump day on the same day?
I gotta give it a job by now.
Okay.
I just think it'd be easiest to coordinate those two together because then you don't wind up with it in the hours.
Well, I mean, cause it's just, we just do it like Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right? Or something like that? Thursday, Friday, Saturday?
Tuesday through Saturday.
Tuesday through Saturday. I don't know. I'm up for whatever, but yeah, if we can release that the quarterly rummage sale's gonna be the weekend, the first weekend in October, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And then whatever you guys can, can get together for the next dump day would be great. So if you don't care to pass that information along, once you guys get that settled. Nate?
It's nothing to do with this, but...
Fine.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the city financials for July twenty-twenty-three and make part of the minutes.
Chris, I have a motion by Nate and a second by Chris to accept the financials from July, correct? Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Haw.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Pierce.